All this meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, whose stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple of meetings tonight. Our first is a public input session. So we're gonna get that started. First, we have roll call. So here Eric Bosler.
Here.
Jerry Diesel.
Here.
James Kirscher.
Yes.
Martha Reesinger.
Here.
Richard Rudolph.
Here.
Terry McDaniel.
Here.
Alright, so we have a forum. Next, we have approval of the agenda. Move to approve the agenda of the June 21st, 2021 regular open session meeting as presented. Public input session.
Second.
Oh, sorry. Public input session. Alright, I have a motion to second. All in favor? Can you oppose? Motion carries. We have our public input session. Dr. Flee, is there anything you wanted to tell us?
This is the initial version of our year plan for 2021. We have a deadline of having this meeting posted by the state of Desi.
Here.
In order to comply with the DSI and federal guidelines on our year plan. So this initial version does basically start out when we ended the year. So this public comment section is to garner feedback from the public on the plan and just listen to their concerns and to their suggestions. We know, oh, that's much better. We know this plan will go through many evolutions and many updates as we go through the summer and the CDC and DESI updates and their guidelines. So this is a plan put together based on where we finished in order to comply with the deadline.
And the plan is still based on CDC and DESI guidelines, right?
Correct.
Okay, so public input. I have Susie Johnson. Would you like to step forward?
Hi, my name's Susie Johnson. I am a St. Genevieve resident. I'm also an alderman here in the city for Ward 1. Not a parent, but appreciate you having this public input session. I think that shows a lot of thought and that you really care about what the community and parents think. First, I wanted to say I was really impressed as you, as the district were putting out, sorry, I didn't really prepare. I just have a couple of things. Not the best public speaker, but I was rather impressed with the way you all communicated, not just to parents, but to the community. I actually signed up for the text alerts because I was really interested in how things were going as far as COVID in the schools. And I got a lot of my information that way, so thanks to all of you, Bailey, thanks to you too. It was really nice to have that constant and accurate communication. So I think my only comments going forward would be, I'd love to continue to see that. I think that's very important to the community, the communication. Maybe some people think it's overkill. I appreciate lots of communication. Also, really respected the fact that you took a very measured approach, very logical steps, not only communicating those steps, but the steps in reopening everything is very well thought out and you explained it very well. So I think I'd like to just say thank you for all of that and would encourage you as you go through this plan to do the same thing. I think that communication bit and the explanation bit goes a long way to help the community understand what it is you're doing, why you're doing it, and of course, following all the CDC regulations. Anyway, that, I'm kind of a big supporter of that too, so.
Thank you. Jennifer Cox.
My name's Jennifer Cox, born and raised in St. Genevieve, but back now to raise my family. I have two students. We are actually relatively new to the district. We transferred from Valley the 2019-2020 school year, so it was very eventful. But I can't say enough about how well I think that you all handled 2019, 2020, and the last school year. Again, I will echo Susie, great communication. I really appreciated also the measured approach and following the guidelines. My children went back five days a week in masks. They did fabulous. The little kiddos are so resilient. I think they have a lot more than we give them credit for sometimes. So we were very lucky that we weren't really affected by quarantines at all. The teachers did a fabulous job in the elementary, keeping the kids, you know, in their masks and, and safe, right, and keeping everybody safe. So I really appreciate your thought and, you know, accepting feedback from us and getting, you know, getting us to be able to talk to you guys and be able to know that I can send my kids, knowing that you guys are doing everything possible to make sure they're safe and well. I really appreciate you guys doing that again for 2021, '22. I know that this is so early. When I found out you guys had to submit something by June 23rd, I was like, so much can change for August, right? So, and I don't think any, I mean, I think all of us want normal to go back, but we, you know, we have to be careful and we have to take really good care of not just our kiddos, but our staff and everybody who works inside the building. So I really appreciate you guys opening it up and allowing for comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any other comment cards. Does anyone else want to give any public input on the reopening plan? I did receive one email from a citizen. Her name was Kyla Partner. She just wanted to say that she believes masks are a personal choice and hopes that we do not go back with masks in the fall. That's all I have. Dr. Flee, anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So you think this version, this version is good? Great.
It's very early. It's very early and it's always changing.
Beautiful change.
Before we move on, I guess I realized once, uh, Bailey, she shits me to death. Bailey Adams, she, she was the driving force. She put all of these ideas into this plan. We got received a lot of positive feedback from our parents and our patrons, but from other school districts in other states because we are family members and family members in this city. She does a fabulous job and we're very lucky to have her. Thank you.
Thanks, Bailey.
Thanks, Bailey.
And I guess, I just wanted to add one thing. I went through the CDC plan and the, I don't know what Missouri calls their, I think it's just the reopening plan for DESI. And I also don't know why there has to be a plan submitted by June 23rd, considering there's two months left until school starts, but there does. And we are following the direction of those plans right now. You know, the CDC's plan says that it will be updated within the coming weeks. I have no idea what that means, but I hope it's updated. And I hope it's updated in time to get the information out. Just keep that in mind. If they update it August 15th and we have to send something out August 20th, I apologize in advance, but we're just following the guidance that were provided. So thank you all and thank you guys also. Entertaining motion to adjourn the public input session. Make a motion to adjourn the public session. A motion to second. All in favor? Aye. Can you oppose? Motion carries. Alright, so. Second here. At 7:10, we'll call a regular session meeting to order and I'll begin with roll call since we did our pledge of allegiance already, or is next, but roll call, sorry to do that again. Eric Bosler.
Yes.
Jerry Diesel.
Here.
James Kirscher.
Yes.
Martha Reesinger. Richard Rudolph.
Here.
Terry McDaniel.
Here.
We have a forum. Got our pledge of allegiance. Board norms are there and available for anyone to review. Next, we have approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda, June 21st, 2021 regular open session meeting.
Second, a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have approval of the consent agenda. Move to approve the consent agenda, the 5th and 6th. Second, a motion to second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Can I be opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have public participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and will respond when appropriate by mail or telephone at a later date. Public comment period will not exceed 15 minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once during the period, and each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. Per policy BDDH1, public participation at board meetings, the following guidelines and procedures will be followed. In order to speak during public participation, a public comment form must be filled out and submitted to the board president prior to the beginning of the meeting. Public comment period will not exceed 15 minutes, and no individual will be permitted to speak more than once, and each speaker will be allotted. And I just repeated that. Here's that. I have one public comment card, and this is for Mr. Roger Faulkner.
Well, good evening. I guess a lot of people know why I'm here, and so first off, I want to start with coming out hard this is. There's a few people sitting here at this table that I don't have, there's nobody in this world that I have greater respect for, so I want the comments that I make not to be personal and, you know, and all that the school board has done this year and all that Julie and Mr. Taylor have done with COVID and here I'm in, I'm talking about a football field. And, you know, and sometimes it just seems so nominal and, but it's something that I pray about, it's something that I've toiled over, and, and I just felt, I felt compelled to come tonight. And not only for myself, but for my wife and Marilyn and my son Kyle and my other son Cory that couldn't be here tonight. We are a excavating company, excavation company in the St. Genevieve County community. We've been here for a long time. We have, we counted on the way in. We have 20 employees that are graduates from the St. Genevieve County School District. And, and one of them has a little bit better golf swing because of Mr. Taylor, but not all together, so anyway. But, and so I was at the Cozy Kitchen a couple of months ago. Somebody made comments to me about what was happening at the field, and I said, well, that's exciting. I know a lot of people are excited about that, and they said, you're gonna be a part of it? And I said, I sure hope so, you know what I mean? And it's, it's something that we have had part in before. So anyway, so time went on and after some things, events began to happen, and I found out that the school district had decided to go a different direction, and, and I totally understood that. And I'm up in, right now, in the athletic field with Cory Faulkner, who's a graduate from here, runs that part of our company now, and he is now in the midst of almost of the biggest year that we've ever had in the athletic field department. We are from, from Festus Schools closest to us to Gretna, Nebraska, which is, is one of the grownest communities, and, and we had worked there before, and they were excited to have us come back. And so I'm sitting in Gretna, Nebraska with one of the graduates here named Adam Schwint, and we're talking one night at dinner, and he says to me, makes the comment to me, he said, so are they getting ready to do the field? And I said, yeah, that's right. And, and he said, are we gonna get to be a part of that? And I said, no, Adam, they've decided to go a different direction. He said, why is that? And he made this statement to me, and I know this is not a public shot, but he said, don't they realize we have pride also? And I said, Adam, we gotta be careful in this statement that we make. And, and he said, are you gonna go talk to them? And I said, I don't know. And because, you know what, this is the first time, Julie, that I've ever stood over here and felt like I was against what's going on there, and it's not a good feeling. It's not a good feeling, and it's not something that I cherish, and that's why. But when we heard the direction that you went, and I made a call to ATG, which this is not an ATG comment, this is not a Burns &amp; Jones comment, the contractor, the two chose is very reputable and all across the country. This is not, that's not why I stand here. Why I stand here today is, is the, is just the, the thought that I, I just want the board from, to realize where we come from as business owners in the community. You know, we are a part of a community. We, and we can throw the card up and we can say, well, we pay taxes. Yes, I have 14 men and women that work for me. They pay taxes here in the school district. Yes, that is true. I do have, I do, as my business, and over the last several years, yes, we have done that. But it goes deeper than that. What it goes deeper to is, is to the fact that in 2006, I think when the other field was put in, in the football field, I got a call one night from Mr. Stewart. If I'm going long, tell me I'm shut. I got a call from Mr. Stewart, and he, and he invited me to his home, and it was me and Mr. Stewart, Mr. Stolzer and Coach Wyler, and there was four or five others there. And he said, you know, this is an exciting thing for the school, but I also want it to be an exciting thing for the community, and I want community involvement, and I want you guys to be a part of that. And so there was people that we were in that business, and so R&amp;K had the opportunity, and R&amp;K was doing well at the time, and so we came and we made a donation and donated all the dirt work and the excavating work for the field. We called friends of ours that were a part of it, and they came and they started, and, you know, and they even gave us the honor to put our name on the plaque there on the football field. It was not a few years later, I don't know how many years later it was, Leon's Field, the baseball field, was done. And ATG called me and told me that they were bidding that, and they said, what's your thought? And again, we said, you know what, on our part, you take this part out because we want to be a part of that. And then even when Jason did Challenger Field, they allowed us to be a part of that. And that is something that we enjoy. We don't hold that, but we enjoy that and we appreciate that. So you can see that, I don't know, I don't know, Jerry, if I call it my aggravation, I don't know if I call it, I'm not, I don't want to stand here tonight and say, well, you know what, I've been picked on, and nothing like that. But I just want you to know as a business owner and a community and from 19 young men and young women that have graduated from this school, you know what I mean? Yes, it does hurt. It hurts when, when that consideration is not given. Now, I heard that part of the consideration was, didn't know what R&amp;K's involvement was, you know, and, and I understand that. I called, I called Ms. Flee, and I apologize for calling you Julie. I called Dr. Flee the next day, and, and I talked to her. She graciously talked to me. We had conversation, and I was pleased with that. And I talked to, you know, to Mr. Bogdan the same way, and a little bit to, a little bit to Mr. Bosler, and also. And, but that's where we're at, that's where we're at. And so we're doing, also had the opportunity to do the field for the Minera, the Three Rivers College, and we were down there a couple of weeks ago, and I got a phone call from a previous administrator here. And we were talking about another subject with her, and as we were talking, and she made comment, and I said, yeah, and she said, I've heard something about that. We kind of talked a little bit, and I said, you know, I called her my name, and I said, because of the position I hold in the community, not only as the, as a business owner, but other positions I hold in the community, I said, you know, I just, I just, you know, and she said, you know what, you go speak for the business owners, and that's why I'm here. I'm just here to speak for the business owners. To you, and I know, and, you know, Mr. Daniel, great respect, you know what I mean? But it was wrong. It was wrong. And, and you know what, and we, you know, we elect school board members. You know what, the ones that are sitting here today, I put a check by their name, you know that? And because I appreciate you and I believe in you. But you know what, when you have opportunity to do something and you realize who people were a part of, we want to be a part. And you say, well, you know what, you want to be a part because of the, of the financial, whatever you want to call it, R&amp;K is gonna do just fine, God's blessing, and we're gonna do just fine doing what we did. But you know what, when, you know, and, and when you have young people that want to come back and be a part of something, I think that's a great thing. And I think it's a great thing when they want to say, you know what, when they come, you know what, we, we were a part of that. And so that's, that's where I'm at. And so anyway, you know, I think that I went over and looked at the track. It's all looking great. I know you guys are excited about the field, and it's all gonna look good, but I just want you to know that, you know, we did get calls a couple of days later. And, and I've been, a few months, a couple of months, whatever time it was, the last time y'all voted on this, deciding whether I would come, and, and here I am. And I walked in and I asked my wife to come, I asked my son to come, and just to, just to show that, you know what, we started being a part of St. Genevieve County School District in 19 and, and 1994, and it was Blountville Elementary. And when I started kindergarten with Mr. Reiter, and I believe in this school district, I believe in this community, you know what, we were a people that when we thought that when our kids got to a certain age, we was gonna send them to a private place and that we had already chose, and, and after meeting Ms. Reiter, Ms. Berry, and Mr. McDaniel and these people, we believed in the school district, and we graduated three kids from here. So we're not here to bash this school district. We're not here to say, you know what, this, but we are here as business owners. We are here as, as, as people of the community saying, you know what, next time, just ask you to take a moment and look. That's all I got. Alright? I thank you and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. I don't have any other public comment cards. Next, on the agenda, we have the report with superintendent.
Thank you, please. I know you're very proud of the notes of appreciation. Do you have a miracle document? Yes. One of them, just to point out, is very nice, thank you, partner. I want that dollar, I need it. So whoever wrote it, please make sure you check it out. Next, I wanted to make you aware that President Washington Allen, our ID firm, will be on site July 12th and 13th, and then they will be back in August, and we will spend the entire meeting with them. And if you look at the office stage, you'll see that is the first of the school, so they will be here during the first of the school, so that might be a little directed, but we'll get to that. Next, I just wanted to make you aware, we have been working with Trotter Auto for many years, and that's what Sheila Henderson. As everyone knows, we lost Sheila, she lost her battle with cancer. So we have Trotter, and Trotter is actually located up in St. Louis. So we've been out and sound in the area, have talked to the other NCAA schools, and they all were required to torture. So I did meet with Dr. Tanner and that Brandon, and he brought the past six of information that you have in board docs. I wanted to talk to that picture day, the wagon way, and showcase your school. This is just some information on what they're gonna bring to the table, and having a representative in the area working with the other campus schools, is there a way to someone closer in the area or often to assist or maybe help? That's not something that Trotter did in that board doc, but it's talking to Gavin to bring back to the factory for a job. Please, however. Any questions? Okay. I will, we will, I will meet, because he's not on the picture, I will meet with Brandon when he gets back from vacation and work through the contract, and I'll bring that to you soon. Father Bus said their annual inspection on March 8th. The inspection is completed by the Boise People's Inspection Division of Missouri State Highway Control. They had one bus that they called a rejection, and what it was, it's a lease sprint. I had to Google that and find out what a lease sprint was, but it was broken. It's not an item that takes a bus out of service, but it is an item that had to be fixed and then re-inspected. So that item was fixed, re-inspected, and passed inspection at the end of March. But with that one rejection, Father's pass rate was 95.5. They do a great job. That inspection rate is higher than the state of Missouri. Let me give him a minute. It's 94, I think, 94, so. I'll take that back. The statewide average for approved buses is 90.9. So Father continues to do a great, great job. I've listed, you know, James Ash, Corey Schrein, Debbie Mary, Mike Pollard, Bradwell, and Christine Muller. They all do a fantastic job. Mary Ellen, who's there inside the studio, so really appreciate all of you. Any questions on the inspection? Okay. Moving on. We were going to do the annual communications audits. Sorry, Bailey, I forgot to say it off. Bailey has been working on our latest direct diagnosis, and we have pretty good to July, and definitely, I apologize, I forgot to do it to July, so I'm gonna say it's rescheduled, and Bailey will present to you a summary of our communications for the year and some survey results, and she has, on July 23rd, our regular meeting. For this one reports, our next for this one report will be September 21st at our regular scheduled meeting. I hope that includes our Florida owners or my group. They're all taking a much needed break, and some are on vacation, some are heading anywhere, anywhere they can. It doesn't have to be all set this time, but they're off right now and enjoying some. And then safety reports. You have to remember that there are, there are court packages. And that's the end of the live report, and I stop to take a rest.
I still owe a little bit of your time. I just wanted to, a statement went to the MSBA Leadership Summit this past week, and some good talk. I won't go over all the stuff that I learned, but talk about competency-based learning, which I hope, you know, we'll get to here in the coming years. It's gonna take a long time, but some more to come on that. Set in on a session on school-based health. We have good program here with our nurses and some mental health and community counseling, but it would be wonderful to have a nurse practitioner or someone of that nature in our buildings to help the kids, so I hope we can do that in the future. Talked a lot about ESAR funds, which are part of the Three Cares Act funds. And then spent a good part of the day going over the legislative session. I shared last month about House Bill 349 and public use of funds for education savings accounts, how I disagree with that, so I won't go into that again, but I will share with you that school districts, obviously, we get a large chunk of money from the state, though we are very locally funded here. We don't get any extra money for facility maintenance, right? We take the money we get and do with it as we need as far as salaries and utilities and things of that nature. However, in the budget this year, there was $5 million given to charter schools for facility maintenance. Just an FYI, and I'll leave this alone. It drives me insane. Most charter schools are in rented facilities, but they get $5 million for facility maintenance, so it just, I'm gonna leave that right there. Okay? The only other thing I want to say, and we've talked about it quite a bit, but I just want to publicly say how much this district respects Mike Stewart, and he will be missed. More thoughts and prayers to the family. Mr. Stewart served a long time, 22 years, 22 years here, carried this district out of some financial woes into one of the best financially sound districts in the state. Over the next few months, I would like to see us get together, facility naming committee, talk about doing something in honor of Mike Stewart, so. I appreciate it, as always, all along. And that's all I have to say. Thank you. Next, we have, I know unfinished business that I see, so new business, we have food service prices.
Yes, due to this federal pricing requirements, we have to, these are lunch prices and stuff. This does not cause a bad, our reduced breakfast and lunch prices, those stay the same. So for twenty-one, twenty-two, reduced breakfast is thirty cents for all women, lunch is forty cents for all women. Breakfast at the elementary and middle school high school would be a dollar sixteen, and lunch would be two ninety for an elementary student, three dollars for a high school student. You see at the bottom, on the bill prices, it says to be determined, we will bring those to you, we are strong, because the tool calculated as we use from the federal government to determine that that was not ready for publication, and we have to put this information together for you. So Ford will often is going to work on that, and she'll have it to you next time. I will take this time to let everyone know that the seamless summer program that allowed us to do pre-lunches and breakfast for all students, pre-day through twelve, during nineteen, twenty school year, as they get stated by the federal government, and so for twenty-one, twenty-two, for all students, pre-day, twelve, we'll continue to do breakfast and lunch for three.
That's awesome.
But parents who would qualify for two and pre-lunches, we still need to go ahead and fill out the forms, because that does impact other programs that we qualify for. So we're going to go ahead and set out all of those forms, and we need to get some of them out, so we will do a reminder and a quick try to get them back. And you have to sort of fish. Any questions?
I would like to put a charge in ATG twenty-one, twenty-two, which is twenty years. I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the food service bids for bread and milk.
So we sent out a request of bids to dairy farms and to wholesale. Coal is a company that we work with, they come in and do our concession things, and bread. I think they do our concession thing, they're supposed to want us to primarily, but they probably don't get all the bread and milk, but they chose not to do the open this year. We were excited to see from dairy farms, not only got a one-year bid, but we got a three-year bid. Typically, our milk prices every year would be taken out, sometimes they stay the same, sometimes they're normal, sometimes they're two things, or two cents. So after reviewing this with Jordan, Jordan Fugel, or our director of food service, Jordan replied to go with the three-year bid, and dairy farms, and three years, and the prices used to bear. So that is a slight increase over the upper selling card this year, but she was very comfortable with that.
Have you looked at this stuff?
We've put together a big package.
Where is it?
We published a newspaper, and we sent it out to the vendors, my dairy farm, the coal, we sent it to the vendors, and now we didn't want to make calls, we said, hey, I'm a vendor farm, now we're spending out of the rest of the connection.
So somebody put it?
Same, same. Just put it to that. So any questions on the note?
You're saying, it usually goes up a few cents a year, so if dairy lost, then it's a good average, supposedly.
Yes, Jordan, I think it's a good average. She recommended we go with the three-year on the milk, and then I'll slide over to flowers, bread, and we typically send our bread bid to the four companies you see here, Roach, Dairy Farm, and Local, and Flowers, Bay, and Sarah Lee, and Holloway Distribution. Roach provided us a bid, Flowers and Sarah Lee could announce. Sarah Lee gave us a good last year, but I'm not sure they have a left in the area for next year. But if you compare the prices, you see that Holloway is quite a bit cheaper. Holloway, you can, if you're having a good dish here, for our bread service, so here it is. Ask me, she recommends that we continue with Holloway, since they have a great rate for the service, very happy conditions, very happy conditions. So those are the two recommendations for the end of the conference.
I move to accept the one bid for bread products, for those down in the form, twenty-two, two year, and three-year bid for product, both twenty-one, twenty-two, two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, scooters. I have a motion and a second, all in favor? All right, any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the budget for twenty-one, twenty-two.
Yes, in board docs, we have salary schedules for twenty-one and twenty-two, that is a pretty long line, and we need some further access. For the support staff, we will have twenty-five cents to first step on each salary, as the minimum wage is moving up, and so we have to move our starting wages up, hoping to stay competitive and to hire quality candidates and keep them. So that change will have, is on the salary schedule as you see. For the certified staff, and for the extra duty schedule as you see, it's adding five hundred dollars to the base salary for teachers, which would bring that to forty-one thousand With this budget, you would also be approving all steps, and steps are for an additional year, you know, of experience, so all steps, all degree stipends, all additional colored hours that are certified staff, you can see that moves them over to a new lane on the salary schedule. With this beginning budget, I recommend that we adopt our current budget as it is tonight with amendments, and we think that our beginning budget is all I want. Our first amendment to this fiscal year twenty-two budget would be on September twenty-first. Doing that just gives me more time to work with the tax rate, which is a little bit trickier this year with wholesome coming on the books, and that process is still continuing to be reviewed and discussed, we'll see where they go. Gives a better picture of state revenue, situations that are developing, as I was saying before the meeting together, is that's why you have to deal with the whole budget this year, the upcoming budget, so there's more information that I can expect to have needed tomorrow, but I think that it is still likely to affect transportation. And again, it'll give us a little bit more time to work on other revenue streams, with all the care that we have, and all those grants that are sitting out there, we have plans for, but we have to absolutely implement, plan, pay the bills, and plus a new percent on the outside. So that is my recommendation on the budget for July.
Any questions on the budget regulation?
I moved to approve the increase in hourly pay and step movements on the salary schedule for our support staff. The increase of five hundred dollars to the base salary, the step and lane movements, and additional degree stipends for certified staff. The increase of extra duty stipends due to the five hundred dollar base salary increase, and the current amended budget as a budget for the twenty-one, twenty-two school.
Okay. I have a motion and a second, all in favor? All right, any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have adjournment for executive session.
Under revised Missouri Statute six-ten dot zero-two-one, I motion that the Board of Education adjourn to a closed meeting with a closed record, a closed vote, after a short break for the purposes of discussing and building upon the following items of business: hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees, scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals, and preparation, including any discussions or work product, on behalf of a public government, governmental body, or its representatives for negotiation with employees.
Yes.
Harry Bowser?
Yes.
Carol Diesel?
Yes.
James Kirchner?
Yes.
Richard Rudolph?
Yes.
Aaron Spedalian, yes. Motion carries.